Wanted to welcome everybody to the February 19th, 2014, meeting of the Shelburne Board of School Directors. I'll call the meeting to order. Next item on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. We have two in action matters. We're going to delete 7.2 Personnel Approved Nomination and add 7.3 Appointment of an Architect of Record for the Facilities Project. So with that, item three is Audience and Communications. I assume all of the audience we have tonight is related to item four, which is the presentation for the three to five academic programs. So we'll head right over to that, and I guess I'll turn over first to Patty, and if you guys could all introduce yourselves, or Patty can introduce you, so the home audience knows who is here tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you, Russ. So if you want to go ahead and introduce yourselves, you may go right ahead.
I'm Christine Hertz, and I teach third grade at Shelburne.
I'm Megan Maynard, and I teach third grade at Shelburne.
Pam Seer, I teach four to five and am co-science leader at Shelburne.
And Jensen Bushy, I'm the literacy coordinator of the school.
And John Madden, I'm the math coordinator.
Do you want us to go right into the presentation at this point in time? All right, great, thank you. So we're just gonna jump over to the computer.
Who's left now? Yeah.
It's right over here, I'm sorry.
Where's your man? I'm trying to figure out where my look is.
Sorry. I think he does. Let's take a second here, as it gets. Do you want to turn the lights off? Or do you want to?
Sure.
Do at least one set.
Is that gonna work all right?
One set, yep. That's great. Is that okay?
Will that work?
Perfect, thank you. All right, well, thank you very much for letting us present to you tonight. And this, whoops, yes, this is our mission statement. Let me get up to my slide here. We wanted to make sure that when we start any of our presentations, that we always ground ourselves in our mission statement, our CSSU mission statement. And tonight, you will know it, I learn, think, live, contribute, and pursue excellence. And tonight, we're specifically looking at our learn, to learn actively and collaboratively. And with that, I did also want to share that the last time we, I'm sorry.
Working.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. So the last time we were here, we also put up these first two slides, and to us, it's really important to make sure that there's connections between everything. So as you look at these first two slides, please remember the K-2 presentation, and as we flow into the three through five presentation, you should be seeing those connections. You should be seeing strands of work that looked younger, that now looks more mature, but similar themes to all that work. And with our mission, our academic outcomes, is what we'll be specifically highlighting this evening. Again, it is grades three through five. And if you look from here, we have our academic, our indicator results, excuse me, are a result of our action plans and our program instructional focus, or focuses. And obviously, with that overall goal to increase student achievement for all of our students. And Jensen will talk more specifically about literacy.
I'm gonna talk about reading, writing, and spelling, the literacy program that children in grades three through five experience in our school. The literacy program is really the foundation for all other academic disciplines. So academic growth in math, science, social studies, it finds its roots in literacy. Oftentimes, literacy will be integrated in grades three, four, or five into these other academic subjects, and you'll see that as I go through the rest of the slides as well. So for spelling, we have a program called Foundations that, again, back to the K-2 presentation, is continued in third grade. In fourth and fifth grade, the students transition to a different spelling program. It's the Holt and Mifflin Spelling Program in grades four and five. In writing, we're this year, in the first year of the implementation of the Lucy Caukens Common Core Writing Units of Study, and this program involves children writing in three genres that match the Common Core. State standards, narrative, information, opinion, and argument are the three kinds of text types that children write in. You'll see once they get to another writing slide, children are often also doing short research projects. So they wouldn't just be writing in those three types, they'll also be doing short research where they present often, so you'll see some project-based work a lot in the third, fourth, and fifth grade as well. And for reading, we have classroom-based units of study that are integrated often with science and social studies, and you'll see children reading in book clubs, reading groups, and texts that match their science and social studies unit. So that's kind of the big picture overview of literacy. So literacy learning in grades three through five can kind of be seen as a continuum. During third grade, the foundation is built, and in grades four and five, skills and concepts grow from that foundation into a structure that children use in the upcoming middle school years. So for reading, reading comprehension is a strong focus of grades three, four, and five. In fiction, we might emphasize things such as asking and answering questions, describing characters in a story, determining themes, comparing and contrasting two or more characters, points of view, stories. And in information text, because children do read in multiple genres and are asked to do that often in these grades, we talk a lot about using text features, how they improve and grow comprehension for a reader, main idea, text structure, problem, solution, compare, contrast, cause and effect, those kinds of text structures. Integrating information from several texts on the same topic to speak knowledgeably, and that's tied into those short research projects, which you'll be hearing more about in the future. And then for writing, as I said before, the children will compose in three text types, opinion, information, and narrative, and they do the short research projects, and students often report out to audiences. Spelling, the children are expected to spell grade-appropriate, high-frequency words, multi-syllabic words that include long vowels, suffixes, common syllable patterns, and I gave some examples of kind of end-of-year words that you would see in each grade, so you can see how it grows, the end-of-year expectations for students in third, fourth, and fifth grade. I also did bring, if anyone wants to look through, some end-of-year texts, so that you could see the difference. In a third-grade kind of end-of-year text, a fourth-grade end-of-year text would look a little bit different, more, more on the page, longer, and then a fifth-grade end-of-year text becomes much more complex, and it's smaller text size even, you can see all those changes over time. So I can pass those around if you want to look at those.
Quick question?
Sure.
Is third grade still perceived as that first year where you're now reading to learn versus learning to read? Has that changed at all? Why are you guys so... Has that changed at all with Common Core?
I'd say it's still seen that way, you know, as an overall, but from my personal perspective is that really that emphasis will begin in kindergarten, where kindergarten children are even understanding that they're always reading for meaning, and they're always reading to learn, and that's how we access knowledge. So really, from kindergarten up, we want to see that now is gonna be kind of the change you'll probably see with Common Core.
And we do teach reading much more aggressively at the intermediate level, three, four, or five now, than I think happened, you know, even five or six years ago.
Correct.
Yeah, I'll just chime in. The Common Core definitely has emphasized that reading instruction doesn't stop. It looks different, and kids respond to text differently, but that they really still need instruction. Close reading is a good example of that. They have to really learn how to do close reading, even at the high school level, so...
What is close reading?
Close reading is a strategy kids are taught when text is really complicated. And since we're doing more with informational text, we can't just expect that kids are gonna suddenly read complex texts. They have to learn how to do it, how to glean key ideas, for example, and just this whole, it's a whole strategy.
Not close.
No.
Yeah. Well, it is getting into it. I mean, yes.
Yeah, so, reading instruction, that was really the first bullet, shifts a lot from decoding of words in K-2, how do you actually sound out the word, figure out what that word is, to what do I understand? So it's that comprehension focus now, and close reading is a strategy that we would use to be able to enhance that comprehension even further. So we would focus on the vocabulary words and what things mean, and so kids read shorter texts much more deeply.
It's amazing having a third grader and a first grader right now, because I look at what my third grader learned in first grade, and it's drastically, like, my first grader's learning drastically different stuff than my third grader did. It's amazing. It's good stuff.
So, yes, if you could click. What I decided to do here is I've included three brief writing samples to illustrate the growth in both reading and writing throughout grades three, four, and five, because I really didn't have time to show you the reading and the writing, and I think this writing example will kind of show you that progression of growth the best. So referring back to the idea that I presented back in, yeah, sorry, slide four, that it's a continuum of learning in grades three, four, and five, you can see here that in grade three, in this piece of writing, it's nicely annotated where in the introduction, the child would, and this is information writing, I picked that one genre, and you'll see it grow throughout these three years, the child would introduce the facts, get the reader interested in the topic, and then divide their writing into sections that includes facts, details, explanations. And then they wrap up the piece at the end. Now, in fourth grade, Patty, if you could go back now into the presentation and click on the fourth grade one, you'll see how the expectations grow in fourth grade. So the fourth grade piece has all of the third grade expectations, plus it includes deliberate word choice, a larger variety of facts, use of more sources of information, more subtopics, which include multiple paragraphs within the subtopics, text features like charts, so if you scroll down, there's another page. So they're asked to now include charts and compare and contrast in some of those text structures they've been using in their reading, in their writing as well, and their conclusion is gonna be much more insightful and kind of call you to action. So you can see that shift from third to fourth grade here. And then if you could go to the fifth grade, you'll see again the expectation grow in that we expect all of the third and fourth grade skills, and this includes multiple styles. If you were to read all of the print there, you would see multiple styles mixed within the information writing. So in each of those subsections, you might see a narrative story, or you might see a how-to description in the special care section. There's actually a sequence text structure within there, how do you care for and wash and take care of a dog. There's inclusion of quotes in giving credit to sources that are used. There's deliberate use of expert vocabulary in fifth grade, and their voice of the writer really distinguishes fact from opinion. So they might have some of both in that information piece. And they have multiple text features now, they might have a table as well as a list, pros and cons. So that is a quick example of how you would see something grow in grades three, four, and five. On the next slide, I thought it might just be fun, I took an S-Back task, and I put it in here for you, and you can kind of preview and see what a student would be asked to do on the writing section of this upcoming new test that will have the S-Back, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. And I don't know if you want to take a guess, what do you think, what grade might this come from?
Third. Only goes by fourth and fifth do they really want that.
That seems pretty complicated. I would say fifth.
So it's a fourth grade task, and really, they're asking them to produce an effective, well-grounded piece of writing. It's an opinion piece, and they want them to revise one or more paragraphs. In this case, it's one paragraph, they want them to revise that. They want them to set a context, organize their ideas, develop supporting evidence and reasons with elaboration, and a conclusion for the appropriate purpose and audience. And we have some assessments that we use to measure progress in literacy, and these are the assessments that we use in the different areas. The first one is the assessments we use for spelling. The second bullet is an on-demand writing assessment that we currently use in CSSU that was written by a group of teachers and literacy coordinators. We use that twice a year as formative assessment to measure our writing growth. And then we use the benchmark assessment system, just like we did in K-2, to measure reading progress. Degrees of reading power begins in fifth grade, and that's a screening tool given to all students. The BAS in fifth grade is given diagnostically for students we need more information on. And then I just put a few slides of reading data, so you can see how our students perform currently. That's grade three. That's kneecap data from last year. That's the DRP in fifth grade. And this is the kneecap writing data. And I made a quick video for you of reading and writing, so you could see some students in action doing some of this work. And then make it full screen. Nope, next one.
Lesson two. You are going to share how you went from crunching to crunching.
Third grade spelling foundation.
Okay. See, that's why I did it. Wait, you're adding a suffix that starts with an N. Or you change it.
Writing an adapted fairy tale.
Who's that cute kid?
Get out of full screen, just the end.
Writing an adapted fairy tale.
Who's that cute kid? What is this? Get out of full screen, just the end.
And now John's gonna talk about math.
Question, I had a question I wanted to ask, and maybe if we ask you questions about reading, writing before we move on to math, if any of the other board members have. So it was interesting in the video to see the one boy, you know, typing it, and so I was curious, how do we incorporate technology into it when, you know, it can correct your spelling, and it can, you know, correct your grammar to a certain extent? You know, so how do we make sure that people have those skills and that it's not just the computer, you know, doing its jobs? I'm curious how we...
So there's always a process that the children go through, and anybody else, please answer and chime in. Megan and Christine, it's nice they're here, because that was actually one of their students in their adapted fairy tales. But there's always a process the children go through in their writing pieces, and that part of the process that you saw is towards the end of the writing process. So at first, the children are asked to do generally what we call notebook work, so they're doing their drafting and their pre-brainstorming stage, and then they move to an actual draft, where they write a first draft, and they get conferences with the teacher on mechanics, on content, on all of those elements you were talking about. And then they move to more of that publishing stage, where they would be working generally, sometimes on the computer. They can start that earlier as well. So, but it's part of the process, and we're also instructing them in our Foundations Program in third grade specifically on grammar and usage and spelling. That's all embedded into that program, so they get that direct instruction there, too.
Excuse me, you know, can you shut the spell check off on certain things? And, you know, just sort of wondering as education evolves, and, you know, we used to write in cursive, and we're taught how to, you know, and I'm not sure if we even teach that anymore.
It is actually cursive part of the third grade Foundations Program. That's a great point, I did not bring that up.
But, you know, things become obsolete to an extent, and, you know, is spelling somehow gonna become obsolete, because we're going to talk to the computers, and, yeah, well, you're the math guy.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's just sort of interesting to see and, you know, think about where is that going.
I think it actually, what we've been experiencing is that it emphasizes it in the sense that they're now writing for a greater audience, and they're on Google Docs, they can then share their work with others. So they're sharing with their peers, and they're editing each other's work, and saying ways that they can improve it, whether it's vocabulary that they want to enhance, or don't forget about commas and periods and capitals, because it's not all the time that spell check will come up with that. And so they're, they've even, in comments that they've shared to each other, they've had opportunity to say, this is a 1-1-1 word in Foundations, check what word you're really meaning. And so that's been really beneficial.
And I think that little boy, actually, in that video clip before, when I was working with him, he said to me, I don't want the red line. So they often are very aware that the red line means they've spelled something incorrectly, and their goal is to not have the red line, and that's where he was problem-solving mountain, was the word. And so then he's like, oh, I got it right. So some of it is automatic feedback that's built in for them, which can also be a very good, a very good thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did anyone else have questions on reading, writing?
I did bring, if you wanted to pick, the fourth and fifth grade, some spelling, if you wanted to peek at those two.
Do that to John.
And I'm gonna turn it over to John for time.
That's a great question. I'll get out of the way. I'm gonna move around.
Well, do you need me to stand up, or is this okay? I'll stay out of the way, how about that?
I thought you were standing.
So I thought I'd give an overview, a quick overview of third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade math, and we use the Bridges Program as the basis of our curriculum, and the new Bridges curriculum in K-2 is Common Core-aligned, and next year, we'll be using the three, four, or five version that is Common Core-aligned. And you'll see some tasks in here that I embedded from the Bridges website, that, like Jensen, will show sort of a progression of the ideas from grades three to four to five. But this is part of a document that outlines the, really, the strands that are emphasized in the Common Core, and you'll notice that the major clusters are pretty much all number and operation. You know, they, really, the Common Core says, in K through five, we want kids to be nimble with number sense and their ability to manipulate numbers, compose and decompose numbers. And so we'll go through one of the key concepts in third, fourth, and fifth grade, which is multiplicative reasoning. So if you go to the next slide, you could take a look at a task from an assessment in the new Bridges Program. This is a preview of their new program. How many window panes are in this window? How do you know? Explain your thinking using numbers, sketches, or words. Again, the words, how do you know? It's amazing that we've got all these posters of the Habits of Mind and Interaction that I've been putting in your face for three years now about the importance of those habits, and there they are, like, it's in the assessment now that says, how do you know? Justify your thinking, you know? So it's really kind of cool. And in fourth grade, same idea, and you can just skip this and go to the task. Okay, just a minute of private reasoning time for everyone. Go ahead and solve this. What would you have to do to solve this?
Get my phone out.
Use the calculator, right? And that's fine, if you could do that, right? So you could multiply, so what would you do? Right?
I'd sketch out the rooms, and I'd put how long each side is, and I'd do the multiplication, and see how many square feet is greater in which room.
Nice, and you'd compare less and more. Beautiful. And now, here's, you can go to the fifth grade one now and breeze over that. Here's fifth grade, so now we're applying multiplicative reasoning to volume. So it's a similar idea, you're having to calculate using multiplicative reasoning. But then we fold in, now write an expression to describe a different box that would have the same volume. So now let's take what you know and apply it to something even, you know, apply that idea to show you really understand the deep concept of volume and multiplicative reasoning. So it's kind of cool. You can go ahead, Patty. And here's an assessment item, and again, we'll play a little guess the grade level on this. Yes, yes. The hint is, it's either third, fourth, or fifth grade. It's a fourth grade task.
Wow.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too. That is a high cognitive demand task. That is no joke.
It's from S-Back.
That is an S-Back assessment item from what kids will see next spring. Yep, that's a fourth grade item. And you know what? You guys have probably seen this, and if you're interested in seeing more about S-Back, just Google S-Back. They have practice tests online, and you can take them yourself.
So that's the thing, it was the thing on Here and Now last week about the S-Back. If you go to the Here and Now website, there's a practice test you can take right there.
Yep, if you, I did it today just to check it out, you can Google S-Back, and just, it comes up with the topic, and then there's all the little subheadings underneath, and you can click Practice Test, sign in as a guest, and take the 90-question, fourth, fifth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 12th grade test. It's fascinating.
It's not reported publicly, is it?
Tim, it is not.
Maybe you don't want to take that.
So the other piece that we are working on relentlessly, that we think is the larger shift, is not the content, although the content, you can see, in fourth grade, I don't think I was solving problems like that. I'm pretty sure none of us were. But the bigger, the bigger change is the Habits of Mind and the Habits of Interaction that we're teaching, and those are the Common Core practice standards, and there they are. And if teachers, it's awesome to see teachers in the high school now selling the same ideas, and the importance of these habits is, these are what make mathematicians. When kids are engaged in those Habits of Mind and those Habits of Interaction, they are doing mathematics. You know, it used to be, if you're crunching some numbers, you're doing math. No, you're not. That's just calculation, that's computation. Doing math is engaging in these habits, and that's why the Common Core has said, these are the things we want kindergarten through 12th graders to do. They're the same for every grade level. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see the same posters that are on the wall here, and then if you go to the...
They're prettier, though.
Yeah, and they're the exact same. And I look around the room here, this is Chris Hood's room, I think, I've seen his picture up here, and he's got public records on the wall, and we do things a little bit differently in the, this is, this is a fifth grade classroom, and when we do public records, it's nice, but a public record is literally recording a student's thinking. So we've got the kids' names up there, and here's how, here's Abby's and Lucas's thinking, here's Colin and Ava's thinking, here's Parrish and Ella's way, and so these then stay on the wall as we explore these concepts. And if kids need a reference point, they go back and, oh, maybe I'll try Colin and Ava's way this time, or, you know, and we can say to them, oh, we want everyone to try this way right now, let's just explore this method and see what happens, and let's let math be the authority, let's let math reasoning be it. Okay, so two video clips, one is from a fifth grade classroom, you know what, let's, in the interest of time, if you guys want to see it, we can see it. The third grade roles, I think, is quite cool, because this is something that a third grade teacher tried a couple weeks ago.
Try it again.
And if you could pause that for a second. It's over on the line. It's okay. We, we assigned roles. This has long, long been known as complex instruction, where you have different kids be the experts, and so in tables of four, partner A, you are in charge of, and we picked Habits of Mind and Interaction, we wanted them to be sort of experts on, and we got all the partner As together, and they designed, what does it look like and sound like to be an expert on this topic? And we got all the Bs together, and they did it, and Cs and Ds, and then we put them all back at their table groups in A, B, C, and D, and we handed them a packet of work and sat back, and this is what we saw. Third grade.
Please take this. Please take this. I told him that after he does work, that we can...
This is the part I really wanted to do.
Cody, your turn to share your thinking. Trying to provide equity.
Tell us how you got that answer. Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Asking a genuine question. Where's that up there on our poster? Boom. Those are the things that we want them doing, and they're doing it. I'm confused about your whole problem. How did you know to do this? So these probing questions, this is doing mathematics, and we trained them to be the experts, we handed them five or four pages of one task at a time, and said, here's what you do. You offer private reasoning time, the next person gets to explain their thinking, to make sure there's equity of talk. Who's gonna ask the genuine questions? Who's gonna make the public record when we're all done? And who's gonna present their thinking to the whole class after we've completed this process? And these are eight-year-olds running the show. We were laughing, the teacher and I were laughing, that, well, where are we gonna go for coffee? Let them be for about an hour, and we'll be back, you know? It was amazing. And that was after one day of coaching, though. So, pretty exciting. That might be it for me. That might be it for me.
Nope. All hands.
Are there any questions before we turn over?
Any math questions for John? You want to go into science?
Glad to.
Okay, so in science, we, at the grades three to five, we design science units of study based on the grade level expectations. We are still responsible for teaching the GEs until 2016.
16, that's the last one.
At the same time, we are bringing in the engineering. We're piloting, engineering is elementary with the Museum of Science modules. And they're being piloted in about four classrooms in the four, five, and I think they were, four classrooms in the third grade, I know last year for sure. And these are tied to the new next-gen science-engineering standards. So we're kind of tying in the standards before we need to, but we're on board. So this is what that looks like. These modules, they start with a real-life story and about an engineer. And then, the children take, we take them through the engineering design process to solve a problem. So they ask, they ask, so in my classroom, last week, we were asking, "What have we learned about the properties of magnets to create a Mag Lev system?" And then, we imagine what that will look like with the given constraints, and plan, and create, and then test, and improve, and share our knowledge. Through the GEs, we meet, we met last year, I'm sure we'll meet again, again, looking at, what do we need to teach? Looking at the GEs, but also looking at those new next-gen science standards and tweaking it a little bit. So you see, in fifth grade, we have waves and sound, so we tied in the GEs with the new waves, next-gen science standards. So we're playing the gray waters, but we're doing it with finesse, I think. Yeah. And this is just, so how do we assess? So we use pre- and post-assessments that are the same. One will be a concept map that the child does before and after the unit, and we can compare those and what they've learned, the concepts and vocabulary. Another will be a probe, as you can see on the right. And these probes uncover misconceptions. This one was, what makes sound? Which of these objects makes sound? Well, anything that vibrates makes sound. So it's a very common misconception. So we'll do this pre- and post, and uncover what they've learned. This is another pre- and post-assessment. We have discovery education at Shelburne. Thank you very much. I know it's an expensive program. But we can design multiple-choice assessments based on the grade level expectations. And this is actually pretty good because it helps them with the kneecap test. And there's a lot of visuals that they can use to help them answer the questions. Formative assessment looks like this. These are journals. On the left is a hands-on station that the child took themselves through. And what they're predicting, they're observing, they're inferencing, they're tinkering with their hands on. We meet in scientists meeting and make their thinking stronger and uncover those misconceptions. And then meet as a larger scientist community, and again, make that even stronger, that knowledge. And then, on the right, you'll see, that was the Mag Lev design that a child came up with. And that is, those type of assessments are very hands-on, like the kneecap. So they'll take themselves through the engineering process, and they're recording it along the way. But that is formative assessment. And these are the kids at work. And you can see with, when you have conversations with them as they're working, you, again, more formative assessments, you can tell who's getting it, who's not, and how are they helping each other? That's it. Questions about science? I know we went pretty fast, but, yeah, it's a lot of fun.
Ross is a little upset. He sees all this stuff about engineering, he wants to know if he has a banking module.
I heard they're putting finance into high school, not elementary.
John's going to put that into the math.
Personal finance, John.
Do some banking, right?
Oh, and the other assessment that we have is the on-demand inquiry. CSU-wide. We, the science leaders worked really hard to create these, emulating the kneecap assessments K through eight.
K through eight.
K through eight.
Although now we have interest nine, 10.
Yeah, yeah. And we will be tinkering with these over the summer and making them even stronger.
Yeah.
So Jess Tullis is our teacher leader at the CSU level for social studies. She could not be here tonight. She developed these slides, so I'm just going to go ahead and try my best to represent what she had here. So obviously, a third-grade social studies overview of what they do. And third-grade teachers, feel free to pop in here at any time. But basically, they're doing a Shelburne story unit. And within there, they're incorporating all the subjects. You can see timelines on the left. That's with those, where it says final project, assembling the timeline there. And then, the children on the right are actually doing a simulation of settlers when they move from Connecticut to Vermont. And in fourth grade, we have Vermont history and US geography is what is taught in a fourth grade social studies. And these are pictures of children in Laura Davenport and Patrick Holliday's fourth grade. They actually did a play that Laura had written, that she's performed before, and she did this year. And it's called Small Choices. And it, and...
It's about the settlement of Vermont.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and she mentioned to me that it's, this year, they focused on perspective-taking because that's something new in the history portion of the Common Core state standards. And so students wrote perspective speeches that they used in, as part of the dialogue for the play. And those, the dialogue was integrated into the play to better represent stakeholders in history.
It was a great play. And then finally, in fifth grade, students are studying early American history and world geography. And what you see here are world geography unit final projects that students, they actually create booklets, and that's what these are, all about a country. Pam, I don't know if you want to speak to it, but these, if you happen to go to International Potluck Night, they were on display by the library, and I know they've done it for the last few years, so...
It's a wonderfully integrated project where they read about a country, so they're using their reading skills, note-taking. It's one of those short research projects. Then they learn how to write an information piece, as you saw, kind of illustrated with the subsections, and they do that on their country. And they create the final project and present them at the International Potluck Dinner. So that's really great, kind of the big picture of what it is.
And we are done. So does anybody have any questions? All right. Well, with that, thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you very much.
I really appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
You did a great job.
Pam, haven't seen you in one of these meetings in a long time. You used to be a frequent flyer.
I know. Good to see you.
Oh, that's right, you are. Too busy playing with the children.
Yeah.
Bye. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan and Christine. Thank you, Jensen. If you still need to have something here, for your health.
Thank you.
So, next item on the agenda is 5.1, the principal's report. So Alan and Patty, you...
Sam, he's not able to get your details.
Yep.
Okay. So, the top section, we just wanted to bring you up the speed. We continue to do principals' reports to the PTO even while we have budget season, so didn't want you to feel left out of loop, so we pulled some highlights there. If you come by the school, you might be aware that unfortunately, we had a long-term employee, Trish Alden, who passed away, she was one of our cafeteria workers. And so, cafeteria and staff have come together. There's several really beautiful memorials to her. If you come to the cafeteria, there's plants in there. There's been a mural kind of painted, now kind of outlining the entrance to the cafeteria, pick up your food, and there's a donated marble bench in the front garden. So nice, nice memories of Trish there. Wanted to make sure you knew that that's, that is going on. Tonight, you could catch Fiddle around the Route if you haven't been here.
Like now.
Literally, right now. So they're performing tonight and tomorrow. Patty had a chance to see it this afternoon with our fourth, fifth graders.
Fourth and fifth graders were invited to go today, and they had a great time. They were a fabulous audience for the group, and it was at the town hall. So, you know, they had that experience. And the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders just did a fabulous job. Kristen Bamberger's in charge of that, and she really put on a, they did a great performance, so...
And arts and citizenship, used to be known as community service, we've broadened that. This is the eighth-grade program that we do, really connected to our mission statement, where we try to ask eighth graders to demonstrate their ability to learn something independently by taking them over to the craft school. And they pick up some skill that they've never had before, whether that's, this time it's been pottery, or painting, or stained glass, and things that, practical arts that we can't do on campus. We have a project they do with our own art school staff, which could be Kristen Bamberger, it could be Karen Lilly, it could be Erica White, where they design a culminating project in the arts. So they design it from beginning to end, and they just are kind of mentored through that process. And then we do a community service portion, where we have students who go to the Shelburne News, they go to the Arbers, they go to New Village Farm, or go down to classrooms and kind of demonstrate how they can give back to the community. And what we've added this year is a culminating gallery, where each student creates a final project, and we share that out. We had our first gallery back in October, it was a great success. The next one will be March 4. And it's actually, per faculty request, we're actually having a faculty meeting where the entire K faculty can kind of see the products of their eighth grade, you know, those investments in their students. So, it's pretty exciting. It's come together really nicely. Take the next couple.
Sure, yeah. So Feed, obviously, is in our cafeteria, working. Erica Frye Delaportis, excuse me, is in charge of it this year. And one of the things that we did recently, I think it was about a month ago or so now, but made a turkey soup, and the kids really loved it a lot. So obviously, we're hoping that more of our fresh vegetables can be used for Feed tests in the future. Spelling bee?
Yep, and spelling, we actually just had our spelling bee. It was supposed to be last Friday. It was Monday. We have repeat champion, Thomas Daly. But it actually took 42 rounds to get through the final three competitors. It was about as sudden death as USA-Russia hockey.
And I must say that we had a third-grade student who stayed in there until like, one of the last rounds. It was unbelievable, so, yeah, it was very exciting. And his assistant was in it, too. She's a fifth-grade writer, she, yep. Very exciting, so...
So a good teaching of spelling going on.
No spell check in the spelling bees.
That's right. Yeah, they actually had to find another list. They ran out of words.
They did.
Did you hear that? Yeah, they ran out of words. It was pretty funny.
That's impressive.
So then, just some after-school updates, just, some of you might remember, about this time last year, we had a little bit of turmoil around Part II and YMCA, and that changed. Well, we're currently at 91 students. That was one of our big goals.
Were we capped at 50?
We were capped at 50 before.
50, yep.
So that program continues to grow, and if you'd like feedback from parents, actually put it on the last page for you.
That was very good. That was incredible feedback. I agree.
And what we're actually extremely excited about is Part II Summer Program, which is coming together. Lauren Lane, our director, as she was reporting to you this week, they're going to do a program where there will be morning camps linked to afternoon care. So a student can come in for these enrichment camps, and she currently has 15 summer camps in line. Everything from dance, to soccer, to music, to cooking, to sewing, to drama. That'll be open, not just to anybody in the community, but also to Part II, where you could continue for that whole day if you wanted it. It's pretty exciting. Alan, any feedback from some of the people who are really concerned about the why getting jettisoned? Yep. And I had no complaints whatsoever, and just kind of that last page, which just says, "We've met and exceeded expectations."
There's a member of this board that kind of reacted negatively, went away, and totally regrets everything that he said.
I've had at least five people...
Not to say that wasn't me.
I think your kids were so young. No, it was like, it was all about, I mean, I bet that 90% of it was just about resistance to change. And then, you know, the lack of knowledge of, you know, the unknown. But again, you know...
It was a good learning experience for some members of the board then.
It was, it was.
Before you speak?
My daughter's... Be open to change.
Yeah, that's right. So, no, it's been, I think it's been great. It's been a great process.
Excellent.
We're glad.
Trusted management.
And then we highlighted just a few other after-school activities. We have the Unified Sports Program. We've really formalized this year. Rachel Urbus has been running it, with up to eight students and some peer members. So those are some of our special needs students who participate in bocce, and snowshoeing, and bowling, and skiing. It's excellent program.
Great, very powerful.
If you come to our spring concert, you'll see the first concert of our jazz band that we have started. Every morning, we have students, I should say, two mornings a week, we have students who arrive at 7:15 to get some extra music. And I think last week, he had 32 students willing to do that. So it's just great. Sports program continued to grow. We just wrapped up basketball, and the boys' basketball team won the CSSU championship this afternoon.
Wow.
Came together well.
Good for us.
And our SCAP program continues to grow. That will have six different options available for students after school this spring. Everything from ultimate frisbee to Lego robotics. Right now, we're doing clay and Minecraft. Sue Shaver's doing some neat things that really blend nicely with our after-school program. So that was kind of old news that had been there. If you've been at Star Day, you've probably seen all those before, but...
No.
Good things to highlight. I'll take the next couple.
Sure. So GOB, we obviously had it, and the results are there. Josh Gamble came in the champ, and he did just edge out Emma Rosno, who took second, and Elena Kreitz, right, who came in third. And Josh goes on to the statewide competition.
Very good.
Our PTO and CY programs sponsored an online safety parent education program. And Detective Thomas Nash from the Burlington Police Department came, and he spoke about, basically, just how to protect children online. It was a very good presentation. And it was actually quite well-attended, so, yeah, it was very good. I would say there were at least 25 or so people there, so, very good, good presentation. Our kindergarten concert was just spectacular. I think it happened last week, maybe, yeah, February 11. We literally had so many people there that we did not have enough chairs. So I had to apologize that people stood in the back, but nobody seemed to mind at all while they watched our 90 or so kindergartners performing. Diana Burrit, Jude Olson, and Mary Nelson just did this great, this great dance and music combination, and it's just a lot of fun. And then finally, our PTO International Potluck Dinner was another great success. Food was unbelievable, and we had a great time playing ball with kids, and I think everybody really enjoyed the evening. So our thanks to the PTO for putting that on, and everybody for making that delicious food.
And then just our enrollment at the bottom, continued to grow a little bit, kind of in and out. And you might remember, one of our budget items is that kindergarten class. And we'd kind of put our threshold 68, so of course, we are at 68 right now, which is...
What do we, you know, what's been our experience for, you know, where we should What do we, you know, what's been our experience for, you know, where we should be? And where, you know, are we usually a hundred percent by February eleventh, are we usually ninety percent by February eleventh? Do we have a crystal ball and a projection?
Patty Spagnolo, who's kind of the guru of this and handles it, her prediction is we'll add between five and ten.
And she does have four right now that are kind of iffy, so just delaying.
Are they included in that sixty-eight or are they?
They are not.
Okay.
What about first graders? Because there's always that bump, I mean, what's going to happen in first grade if we have another ten? Is that going to be a problem?
It won't be a problem if we keep it at five teachers, which is what we budget.
Five, okay, alright.
But definitely not wanting to reduce to four.
We have a little bit of room now.
Because I was, I did, Patty printed the flyer for us, and never had a loss for words, Patty Spagnolo, we were chatting. And it made me think, like, not when we write these board corners about get your kindergartner registered, do we ever say get your first grader registered? You know, get, let us know about your first grader, because we would, it would be nice to know that.
Right, when do we learn of the, you know, as we've looked at the numbers, typically it's eight to ten percent bump from kindergarten moving into first grade that we get that. So, yeah, when do they show up, or when do we learn about them, and how does that impact our planning?
Is that something we should, we should do, or?
Yeah, Patty's done a pretty good job actually of knocking on the doors of all the private preschools, because that's where these students tend to stay. There's a few that stay home, but most of them are just K's who've been happy at Schoolhouse or a place like that. So they don't transfer in, but we know they're coming. And I know we know of four so far that are coming, confirmed, they've registered, we've been knocking on those doors, but not more than that.
Yeah.
So I'm seeing February two thousand thirteen here, kindergarten was eighty-four, what's our number right now?
Right underneath that.
That's enrollment projected.
Eighty-eighty-four is how many are in our building today?
In our building today.
And then the sixty-eights that we know of, that would show up for kindergarten.
Next year, and you're saying maybe another ten, which brings it up to seventy-eight, but this is six above that, so... We could have as many as fifteen more next year, because.
That's how many are there today?
Right.
They'll be first graders next year.
Right.
So.
If we have sixty-eight now, and we add another ten, that's seventy-eight, that doesn't make eighty-four. We have eighty-four now. Seventy-eight from eighty-four, that's six, so.
No, the seventy-eight would be next year's kindergarten.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay, so I'm not sure what your question.
Are you asking why we need five teachers?
No, I'm saying that we're not projecting as many as we have had over the last two years, correct?
We're not projecting, this is the biggest, our current K class is the biggest K class we've had since the current sixth grade class that was a hundred and four.
Right, okay.
Because you're looking, it was sixty-nine in September two thousand twelve, it was seventy-eight in two thousand eleven. We probably had four teachers both of those years.
But then it went to eighty-five.
And then it went to eighty-four.
And so we're expecting it to go down again.
Seventy-eight was the year we had four teachers and scrambled and brought in pairs just for every classroom in here. But that was a late enrollment, we didn't, we got hit at the end of the summer on that one.
But I think what you're doing Kathy is you're comparing that figure of sixty-eight to the September figures that we've had in the past.
Right.
And asking about the, in two thousand eleven and twelve, we had seventy-eight and sixty-nine respectfully, and.
But since then you've been up.
Right, so, but we only had four teachers, is what you're saying, for kindergarten.
I'm not even thinking about teachers, I'm just thinking about number of children that we're expecting. Is it reasonable to cap it at sixty-eight and think we're only going to get seventy-eight, when over the past two years we've had more, is what I'm saying?
Right, and especially the data we're starting to see, and the wildcard out there, just to be real clear, is we still don't know anything about Harrington House. We're asking, we're pushing as hard, it's due to open July first, we know that. We know that those families are coming with children, their apartment's designed for that. But the word we're still getting is they can't tell us who's on their waitlist, what decisions have been made, or when they're going to be able to tell us that. But we're weekly communication with them, and they're just, Champlin Valley House is just now hiring the person that's going to coordinate those decisions.
But they know that when somebody comes in, here's a bunch of resources that you can use, one of which is call Alan and Patty and tell them.
Call Alan and Patty, because our push has really been, if they're arriving July one, we want to put them in our summer programs, we want them to know Part Two is available, we want them to register for us. And the sooner we know that, the better the experience to kind of transition in the community, so.
Do we know how many units are there? I don't even know that.
Somebody told me it was in the twenties for families, right? Twenties or thirties or something like that, because there's three stages?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a three-stage project.
I've heard multiples, so I don't want to predict what. Soon as we get it, we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Next is item five point two, CSSU debrief. Couple of items, one, we had a presentation by Mike Boardman of Hickok and Boardman, he's our insurance broker for our various insurances. The biggest piece of that is, which I think he said it counts or something, it was sixty percent of the premium dollars that CSSU pays is for workman's comp. And, you know, they describe some of the things that we've done and continue to do to try to keep that, you know, the workman's comp experience as minimal as possible. The other big thing I think was a bit of a conversation on how Act one fifty-three and one fifty-six are going to affect the way that CSSU allocates special ed costs. We, in the current budget year, are allocating that frankly like we do transportation, where it's based on actual usage, even though all of the students are going, I'm sorry, all of the teachers are going to be CSSU employees rather than Shelburne Community School employees. We've since learned, since those decisions were made, that we're not doing it the way we're supposed to. And that rather than doing it that way, that it's going to have to be formula-driven based on average daily membership, equalized students, or actual student count for the number of students that are receiving special ed services. So that's going to be a discussion matter, I believe, at the Shelburne Community School meeting next month. And by June, we're going to have to vote on what that, you know, what methodology is going to be employed by CSSU in terms of allocating those expenses, so that will be, you know, coming next, next month. I think those were really the two biggest things from that, from the, then we had, and Dave and Tim, I think you guys were both there for the common topic on evaluations. Next item is five point three, our second quarter FMR, if I can find that in here, it's definitely positive. And that's actually going to then lead into one of our discussion matters next. But currently we're projecting to be, have a budget surplus of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Alan or Patty, is there anything that you want to comment to why, you know, what some of that favorable is due to? Or is it just our usual prudent?
A lot of it is, you know, just wise and prudent budgeting. And then related to some of our hiring that is.
Was more favorable than was originally.
That was more favorable than what we expected, it even goes back to just good solid budgeting on that.
I will note that the food service is currently running a deficit of about seven thousand dollars. Obviously, we're hoping to eliminate that before the end of the year. If not, we're going to end up having to vote on how to cover that. Usually what we've done in the past, when we've had a deficit there, is covered it out of any favorable budget variance that we've had, so.
Is that driven by higher food costs or lower participation?
It turned around in the last quarter, isn't it?
Portion of the year?
Don't remember what it was for the first quarter.
There's this, there was this sheet included, it was very interesting to note how much lower the food sales were dramatically lower, like almost half in most instances. Can you tell us why people are buying less food in our cafeteria, what your senses for that?
It could run above.
It just seems odd that.
I mean, I think adult sales are down as well.
Yes, they are, both children and adults drastically.
I mean, I can try to determine that for you, but I'd be guessing right now.
I just would.
We're working hard to try to.
It makes me a little bit worried about seeing those numbers so decreased.
So we're working with students and with actually, you know, a student group and with some adults to try to determine ways that we can improve the cafeteria to try to get those numbers up. So we know about it, and we're trying to work on that at this point in time, but I don't, I don't really have a good reason why not.
I recall reading at one point about new federal mandates about, you know, nutrition and what the lunches had to look like, and it didn't get very good publicity. Do we think that that's got anything to do with?
I haven't heard that from Becky, you know, and Becky is, she's monitoring that, she's doing everything. She's working with our fifth grade SLC, who met with us today, you know, just to kind of, A, improve the overall cafeteria experience, but again, our primary concern is two-fold, one, you know, our kids eating. Are they bringing it from home, and if they're choosing to bring nutritious food from home, that gets them through the day? We're okay with that, you know, and I don't think it's a matter of kids not eating. But again, her question is, boy, we've got a good staff making good food. So they're asking the questions, the SLC's put together even a student survey that they'd like to put out. So lots of efforts going in around it, it's not going without notice, but I don't think anything jumps out.
Is there a lot of waste as a result of sales being so low? I mean, are they preparing large amounts of food, and then the food is what happens?
No.
I don't think it's any more waste than is typical.
Just it was pretty outstanding.
Next item on the FMR is where we are with the fund balance. So as of July first two thousand thirteen, it was seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Bob, if I'm reading this correctly, we're saying that for this year, because of the favorable that we're running, we would only draw that down by roughly fifty-eight thousand dollars, so that we would have six hundred, call it six hundred and seventy. We're asking the voters to approve a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in next budget year, so that at the end of that year, we would end up at roughly half a million dollars. So a couple of comments on that, one is we've had some conversation in the past, depending on where we decide as a board to go with the work of the Facilities Committee, and work that we feel needs to be done, including the new roof, including possibly some changes to the wings to, you know, deal with the noise issues and, you know, that sort of thing, that we would likely be going to the voters with a bond issue. So depending on where the fund balance is, we may use some of that at that time, so that we would plus have, you know, have to bond less of that, of that need. So Bob, the piece that I want to make sure that we're understanding, because we've talked about the, you know, the running favorable if we do end up with, you know, a hundred and change favorable. And if we use those funds that we're running favorable this year to do the playground, or do other deferred maintenance, or, you know, whatever we might elect to use, how does that affect these fund balance calculations?
It doesn't change, well, it changes the fifty-seven. If you, at the top of your calculation, if you instead of drawing down a hundred and fifty, or fifty-seven, draw down a hundred and fifty-seven, it takes it out of the balance for the following year.
So it ends up at the end of fourteen fifteen is four hundred rather than five?
Right, yeah.
Any questions about, since we have Bob here, any questions about the FMR?
You're saying that seven twenty-seven number includes the one oh seven that you're running in the black.
That is, that was the fund balance at the beginning of this fiscal year. The expectation, what the voters approved was that we would draw a hundred and sixty-five from the fund balance this year. But because we're running a positive variance, we would not actually pull all of that this year. Unless we said, well, you know, there are projects that we would want to do, and again, we've talked about the playground. In the past, we've done, you know, some things that were a little bit further out on kind of our five-year maintenance plan. We've pulled up some of those projects when we could get the work done at favorable cost. So that's the, you know, some of the decisions that we'll need to make.
So just to be clear, the hundred and seven thousand you're talking about includes moving the entire hundred and sixty-five from the fund balance, correct?
Yes, in a way. Bob, you want to?
Yeah, I would anguish over say in a way. The, the.
Yeah, that's what I'm watching at.
The plan was to draw a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars out of your fund balance. The financial statement forecast that Patty and Alan are putting in front of you says they're only going to need fifty-seven of that. So that's, the net difference there is the hundred and seven favorable, okay? If you spend more, you're going to, you have to draw more out of the fund balance. The significant difference, well, the beauty here is that you have an opportunity to have both conversations. You can have a conversation next year about what you're going to get voter approval to spend out of accumulated fund balance from the prior year. But you can also have a conversation in June to fund something this summer from favorable performance you've got this year. So you've got the latitude to do, but to Russ's point, you, the numbers change when you do either one of those, so you can't, you can't do both.
Try it twice. We'll try it. Some in your shoe set done it.
Tried or done it?
Trying, more than once, in the recent past, but I won't mention names.
Wasn't on this board. Next item is five point four, the Facilities Committee. So if we could have a report out from some of the folks involved on where we stand.
Yep, well, we are, have interviewed four firms. And we then met and discussed what, how we would assess each one of those firms, and have come up with a recommendation, but I believe seven point three is where we are going to formally present that to the board. So then our next steps after that, after hopefully an approval, is to go and talk to the firms, and then get this, the final firm to come in and begin to meet with us.
So you're, but you're making, the committee's making a recommendation to the board to approve one of these four firms that I guess you guys have interviewed. What was the process, what was the, you know, you have a recommendation, is that based on cost? Is it based on experience, what is the?
All of those. Each, each one of the firms came in and had approximately forty-five minutes to give us a presentation along with a proposal, which they did, in varying formats. Each one of the four was very different, it was quite interesting to see that. And they approached our issues and our requests in different ways. Each one of the firms gave us lists of their experience and similar experiences, what they felt were similar experiences, and gave us some sense of what a cost would be from them. They don't know, as you can imagine, what, but they gave us a range. And I would say that we probably, we based our decision less on what a proposed cost would be than what we felt their experience. And I would say the, how they might fit well with our culture. And so that's what we based our recommendation on. Did you say that's in?
You've done well.
Thank you very much.
I think that was the same, that was the process I was in too.
And are they, you know, assume that they're fully comfortable with the timeline that, you know, we've outlined in the past in terms of when we need to have a bond vote?
Yes, and actually, they have, several of the firms gave us some options from their experiences of going out with projects of similar sizes. And several of the firms also would provide us with advertising and marketing experience with the public, which we felt would be very valuable.
Public relations.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any questions on Facilities Committee work? So the next item is six point oh, Discussion Matters. First is six point one, the Playground, which is something that I had asked to be added to the agenda. It's something that we have kind of punted around a little bit. It's something that we have, uh, kind of punted around a little bit. Uh, you know, in the, in the last, I don't know, six to twelve months or so. One of the conversations or part of the conversation, uh, from Mike Boardman in the insurance presentation was that I guess our new insurance provider, uh, sometime in the not-too-distant past has been around and reviewed facilities. And I don't know if, uh, he was a big fan of our playground or not, I'm not sure if that made him-
I wouldn't describe that.
His disposition as he left us.
Fan would not be the right term.
I think it's, it's funny that he characterized it as a, a splinter hazard, if the whole thing is surrounded by wood chips. Didn't mention that, but, so.
Yeah, Lauren Layden, our part two director, does refer to herself as the official splinter remover.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's a, a, a constant.
So.
Constant.
So there's like all kinds of conversations going on about this. And there's the playground across the street at Davis Park that sparked something at a PTO meeting and it's starting all of these conversations around. So I'm not sure what plans you had for this conversation, but.
My plans were to have a wide-open, free-range discussion on where we ought to go with this and how we ought to pay for it.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, clearly we have a problem, uh, with the existing playground equipment that is nearing the end or perhaps in some cases past the end of its useful life despite the nostalgia for big old steel s- uh, slides. And, and as I say, we've kind of punted this around and, and haven't really done anything with it. Um, one option to do something about this and to do it fairly expeditiously, uh, we're running a positive variance. And we could elect, uh, to apply some of those funds to, uh, you know, replacing the playground equipment that we need to replace. Um, you know, we, we talked about the possibility of fundraising for it and that, you know, kind of didn't, uh, didn't go anywhere. Or, you know, we could just tear it down and not have one. Um, but.
There is that.
But I'm, I'm sure that wouldn't be a very popular.
You're on TV, Russ.
There we go, there's Shelburne News' leading line right there.
You know, we, we, we've got, we've got a pro- problem with the existing playground that we need to address and we need to address it sooner rather than later. Um, I'm sure that, you know, tearing it down and not having one wouldn't be high on anybody's list of, of great ideas. But, um, we can't just leave it as is. It, it, it has to be dealt with in some way.
Bust them to another playground.
I mean, you know, we talked-
We've got a lot of good ideas.
Yeah, we do.
I mean, we've talked about this a number of times.
I haven't done one yet.
We've talked about the fact that we do have the funds. And, I mean, I think it's the wise thing is to, and I, I guess I don't know how we get from here to what it really should look like. Obviously, there needs to be some involvement from the insurance company because we certainly don't want to build another splinter factory if they're not-
Well, I mean, that's the thing.
Favoring that, so I-
So instead of, instead of wooden, wooden playgrounds with metal slides, it's metal playgrounds with plastic slides. So that's, that's, that's what, I mean, I've seen the design that Dave has and I've gone over it with him a couple of times. Seems reasonable. I wish he could reuse the metal swings, but he doesn't want to do that.
Yeah, I have both of them here if you-
Yeah, I mean.
But it would seem that we should, you know, not to create a committee or a process, but I think we should really dig deeper than, you know, um, you know, just having, I don't know if we have one proposal or two proposals. But I think there should be some either parent or student involvement in what goes out there. I don't, it's not like buying a tractor.
If we elect to use mon- you know, the money from the positive variance, if we decide that that's how we want to fund this. Bob, as far as process to vote on this and approve it, uh, it has to become an action matter and we would need to have this vote by when?
Well, let me back you up. You want to do that this summer. So you want to find, uh, three firms willing to sell you playground equipment or early enough, that you ordered early enough that you could take delivery and have it installed this summer. So you're probably looking at releasing purchase orders sometime in the April timeframe, no later. I don't know what you've got there from the two firms, but.
Yeah, and that is Dave's vision.
Yeah, and, uh, the, if you're gonna use the hundred and odd thousand that we talked about in favorable performance, you can transfer that, um, at any point in time into the construction fund to set up the, the funds necessary to do what you're about to do. The, the minor risk would be that if you, if all hell breaks loose between now and year-end and you hire four more teachers that I'm not aware of between now and year-end, and a hundred thousand gets spent before we get to June, we're, we're in a little bit of trouble. But we can figure out how to get through that swamp if that's where you're at. So that, that would be the obligation is you, you as a board commit that that's where you're gonna fund it from and then you instruct Alan and Dave to go ahead and do the detail work.
It, it would sound like that by the April board meeting, we would need to vote to approve something.
Expenditure of some amount of funds.
Yeah, for, for whatever. So is it then, you know, is it reasonable to come back to the board for our March meeting with, you know, two or three levels of proposal? Um, I, I, I don't want to look at, you know, the, the hundred and something thousand and a hundred and seven thousand in positive variance and say, oh, goody, we can, you know, we can spend all of that. But, you know, is there something that, you know, fifty, seventy-five, and a hundred, or, you know, some levels like that? Um, that, you know, kind of good, better, best, if you will, uh, in terms of replacements that you could come back to and, you know, propose to, to us at the March meeting? Any sort of follow-up, whatever could take place prior to the April meeting and whatever our April meeting is, probably sometime around tax day. Um, we would vote to do that. Are you guys good with that?
I mean, I just, again, want to know how we're gonna get the input from the people who are gonna use it. And how, I mean, what the process is solicit that. Because if we spend fifty, seventy-five, a hundred grand and it's not fun, then.
So do we need a student committee? I mean, they're the ones who, you know. Don't ask, don't ask their parents. Ask, ask the people who are gonna, who are gonna use it. I, I, I don't know. Um, I, I'd assume that there are experts in this who, you know.
Yeah, what we've done thus far is Dave has a couple of companies that he's worked with and just asked them to come back to some ballpark. They've come back with eighty and ninety thousand dollar rough proposals that have a variety of options. They've kind of looked at what's, the, the parameters have been. Oh, we want approximately the same number of elements as we have existing and, and just put it out there as options. I mean, I think I'd see what we would do would then firm that up with these companies, ask them to come up with two or three designs that we could work with it. Probably, I would think, like the fifth grade SLC is probably our, our number one group, this kind of playground savvy. Work, work with them to kind of get their view on things. I think where we need help would be, you know, within what range of funding is the board willing to put out there? And are you looking for some type of fundraising component that you'd like us to take to the PTO saying, well, the board's willing to do this, but we would sure like to have this level of support? I know there've been conversations about that.
So the PTO has committed five thousand dollars. And I know there's probably a couple thousand other dollars out there, people that want to donate. And the thought I had with Randy and with Courtney was we'd do a giant check presentation on the front page of, uh, the, uh, Shelburne, I don't know, maybe some publication in this.
Kick off the drive.
Yeah, and try and get some extra money to, to defray the cost from the community that way.
Yep.
And I've told you this before, we would have people donate through the PTO. So it would still be a tax-deductible donation. We wouldn't have to set up a separate charitable account in order to do that. So I think if we did a short thing throughout the month of March, assuming our budget passes, and, uh, that, you know, we could, we could do that. And, yes, exactly. So that's a way to possibly get, I would say, very conservatively, maybe about another ten grand.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay.
Yeah. And th- the other thing is, the assumption is that the playground on School Street, Dave's gonna just take that down this summer or it's gonna go away?
Yeah, and just to be clear, the assumption is both playgrounds have, we've gotten, they should go away. School Street and the Snelling Playground, both have, have the same issues, both being wooden. What we foresee is replacing the large playground behind the school. That front playground just goes away. There is a new playground that construction is supposed to start this summer across the street, the kind of natural playground that Shelburne Parks and Rec is, is doing. That leaves the kindergarten playground. We're not confusing that with the wooden structure there on School Street.
So our-
Go ahead.
Excuse me. Our children would be able to access the Davis Park playground? Is that what I'm hearing? It becomes an option for our school or not?
Not so much during the day, not crossing School Street during the day.
Okay. So we don't even really need to mention that, it sounds like?
It's just not available. It will be available to kindergarten next year.
The Davis?
The School Street. You know, right now it's used. Is that what you're asking?
No, the, the new one that is being built in Davis Park, the, by the Parks and Rec.
But not, not including that as a school solution, I think I hear what you're saying.
Exactly, so that's-
Just keep it out of the conversation.
Right, yeah.
Just really moving, simply replacing one.
Yeah.
Yes.
Simplify it.
I mean, is that gonna be acceptable to the people who currently use that playground and use? You know, I know that there's concern about having the little kids with the big kids on the same playground. I mean, is that short-sighted to just take that out and not replace it?
Well, I'd, I'd like to have some conversation around, is there a part of the playground that could be a kindergarten park? Because there's lots of playgrounds out there where, you know, the structure is divided, if you will, into, um, different elements that are significant, you know, that are, um, designed more for, you know, kindergarten, first grade, and second, third, and fourth, fifth, you know, that kind of, um, design. So I'd certainly like to look at that because then we would have two playgrounds for kindergarten. They could use the big structure at times, you know, the, the, um, back selling, snelling structure. And then they could also use the structure that's near the Journey Mall, Journey Room, Journey Wing.
But I guess my question is, is the playground that's gonna be taken out, I don't know what area you call that?
We call it School Street.
The School Street?
Yeah.
I mean, do the younger kids have recess in that? I mean, are they?
Yes.
I mean, if you build a nice K through three structure on the main playground, do they have access to even use it? Or do they need something on that School Street side of the building?
Um, where that kindergarten is located, obviously it's near that structure and that's one of the reasons why Treehouse uses it. But, um, they also do use the one that's down B-Wing, so on the other side of B-Wing. So this would be going across the building, you know, in the back. It's far. I mean, it's, it's a walk.
But I guess where do they currently have their recess? On School Street?
Um, between those two. So sometimes on School Street and sometimes, um, in the, I'm calling it the Journey. I don't know what that playground is. Does it have a name? Kindergarten Playground, the one that, you know, is all fenced in.
It would be nice if we're looking at that, if there's a possibility to run that a little here and maybe a little less over there
Could be, yeah.
Keep the kids segregated.
Yeah. That, that particular playground cannot fit all the kindergartners this year safely. It's, there'd be too many kids. The school? The kindergarten playground. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have a name for that playground. It's near, you know, near what we call the trailers, you know, that, that playground. So it's all fenced in and you really can't put, um, eighty-five children safely in that area, right?
So there's really three playgrounds then?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But for kindergarten recess, aren't they split in half? Don't they?
Mm-hmm, that's what I'm saying. So they're, they're split in half right now. But of course, the, sometimes it's easier if you're able to do recesses together in two different places just because it frees up what you can also offer for various lunchtimes. Our cafeteria is small enough, so it's kind of limiting for how to get kids, you know, the flow of traffic, if you will, through the cafeteria.
I think come back in March with proposals on what you think is needed.
Okay.
And, you know, spending less money is, is fine if we can do it. But, you know, come back with, with what you think, what you need to make it work and, uh, and what you think you can get a majority of the board to support.
There you go.
Uh, I, I think there's, you know, agreements or consensus that we have to do something and that this is the way to do it. I mean, is there any, am I misreading that?
Um, so looking for probably three proposals?
It could be one.
Could be one, okay.
It's a good one.
Thanks, Dave. All right.
It's always good to give choice, but not too much choice, so.
We'll, we'll come back with something, yeah.
The one thing I have heard is that it can't look like Charlotte because I guess that structure's too tall and kids fall off of it. Uh, I find that unbelievable, but.
I think we want to be breeding the next generation of slope style and, you know, ski jumpers and that sort of thing out there.
Want a boarding course.
Build it high.
Yeah.
You know, go, go, go all the way up.
Go for the gold.
So you're going shorter than Charlotte. He wants to go higher than Charlotte.
Yeah, I guess.
Yes, we do need two proposals then.
At least.
So can I just, while, while I've got you for a second?
Sure.
So in, in terms of process, just to be clear, we're gonna come back with proposals, but then those proposals, once we have board approval, would then go out to bid.
Yeah, you have to put this out to bid at that amount of money.
Okay, that's what I thought.
In school money.
So we'll kind of frame it up in terms of, come to you with proposals, but we're not asking anybody to give us solid bottom-line numbers because, well, that comes with their bid. Okay, got it.
Bob, thank you for helping us through this part.
Yes.
Need anything from me elsewhere on the agenda?
No, I don't think so. I think we're, we're good.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, see you, Bob.
Um, next item, six point two, budget informational meeting, uh, preparation. I, was the flyer going in this week's?
The flyer goes in next week's paper.
Next week's, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so Dave, thank you for-
Yes, very nice job.
Yeoman's work on that.
That was very good. Did, did everybody see it? Looked good.
I've got copies.
It was on.
I think it's been.
I just said it's in your notes.
Some, some of it's right there.
There you go. Have some additional practice.
Thank you.
So, um, you know, as far, as far as town meeting itself, um, I, I do want to work with you, Alan, a little bit more on the presentation as we'd kind of talked about before, the joint meeting one. You know, that one was pretty much straight nuts and bolts on the numbers. Uh, we, we do want to, you know, flesh it out with, you know, kind of the, the things we like to brag about.
Yep.
Uh, about, you know, school achievement and, and some of those things. So, uh, i- if you and Patty can, you know, work on that and, you know, maybe sometime next week, we can either by phone or, or at school get together and, um, and do that before town meeting.
So I just was reading those articles that Elaine sent to us and they said like the average student cost in Vermont was around eighteen something? And this, and then, like, I see our number, that's twelve something? I mean, is that?
What?
Are those apples to apples?
Um, I don't know. And, and, you know, what, what I don't know about that eighteen thousand number is whether that's, you know, per equalized pupil or real human bodies or, you know, that sort of thing. So, uh, I, you know, the answer is, I don't know. I don't know if we're comparing apples to apples in that.
Because I know that the thing that you wanted to point out in the flyer was the, our-
Within CSSU, we, you know.
We're pretty low.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the Williston K to eight, uh, per pupil is a little bit lower than we are. Uh, we're significantly less than, uh, Sh- Charlotte and Heinsberg. We're also significantly less than the, the statewide average. Uh, so, you know, I, I think that we run a pretty efficient and, and pretty tight ship at the same time, doing a really good job with students. Uh, and I hope that the voters recognize that. Uh, but, yeah, so that's, you know, that's one of the things we wanted to, to make sure that people understand. But, you know, relative to that number, I, I don't know.
Okay.
So, um, anyhow, so we'll, we'll work on that at some, at some point next week. So, um, and I guess we go first, uh, for town meeting, which is, uh-
Thank goodness. This year's gonna be a very contentious town meeting. Wow, so.
Well, you know, you can stay for the fireworks, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Bring a hose.
Well, and, and, you know, we, we could get asked some hard questions. Or, you know, the, the statewide tax number, uh, is not pretty.
Oh, gosh.
Uh, you know, because of decisions that, you know, have been made at the state- You know, because of decisions that, you know, are being made at the state level about, you know, things that come from the Ed Fund and what they're doing with the statewide tax rates, we could get asked some, some very challenging questions as well, so I would expect we will. So next item, communications, board's corner. Anybody thoughts, ideas on what we would want to do there? Maybe it depends on how things go at town meeting.
I would suggest.
I think we should write a playground. Do you want to write a playground? We could do that.
Money in March.
That's nice.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. We can do that. I wouldn't mind doing that.
There we go.
So. And then putting a little paragraph in there about if you have a kindergartner and preschooler, please don't forget to register them.
Yep. And, you know, depending on how the budget vote goes, we'll maybe write another one. So we've got some action matters on the, on the agenda. So the first one is seven point one, scheduled retreat date. Just so everybody knows, at the CSSU meeting, we voted to, for the five-thirty date, so that sort of means ours needs to be then too, but we do need to have a motion for a retreat date.
A motion, go ahead. So moved.
So moved.
Okay.
Second, okay. All in favor of May thirtieth as our retreat date? Aye. Seven point two, we were deleting, and then seven point three, appointment of the architect. So the committee is recommending that we approve Doran Whittier, which is a, a firm with offices in South Burlington. And if we could get a motion to, a motion in a second, and then we can have some conversation on, on Doran Whittier a little more specifically.
So moved?
Second. Second. So, so like I say, you guys described the process that, that you went through and selected Doran Whittier. Cost-wise, I know we have money in the construction fund, but what was the projection on, or how do they bill, I guess, is, you know?
Well, I mean, I mean, basically, the process is that once they become the architect of record, then they have basically an agenda laid out, and then they will, we will review what we're looking for, and then they will come back with a final number to get us from today to the bond vote. But at this point, until we define the scope of the project, it's not a fixed number.
But do they bill hourly, or what is the?
I mean, they, some of the firms bill hourly, some of them will do it on a fixed rate. I mean, it all backs into a percentage of the project at the end of the day. So if they don't get it up front, they get it on the backside. So that's just kind of the, the process that they go through.
I, I don't recall that Doran Whittier was on an hourly basis, whereas another firm was on an hourly basis. I don't have the, I thought they just gave us a flat number.
Yeah, but they didn't commit, I don't believe.
No, oh, no, they moved it.
But they will be on, it will be on a flat number.
Project basis.
Project-based, okay.
Exactly. And we felt that their experience was as the most closely matched to our needs and what we see as our needs in our school. And we were very comfortable with their experience.
Yeah, I have one other website today, and it certainly looks like they've done a lot of schoolwork in the past, so. And it looks like it doesn't work for Williston.
And, yeah, and Charlotte.
Yeah, Charlotte, okay. So they're well acquainted with our SU.
And the principal of the firm is a Charlotte parent as well, so he's, has kids in the elementary school, so he's invested.
Okay. All right, so all in favor of approving Doran Whittier as the architect of record for our facilities project?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item is eight point oh, the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Tim and I have both signed the, I think Tim has signed the director's order, so we're all set there. Next item, confirming the meeting dates. March twelfth is the next meeting. And just so everybody is aware, we reverse the order, because that is the meeting after the town meeting day vote where we reorganize the board. So we, actually, Molly, I think, is like the acting chair and kicks the meeting off, and we elect a chair and a vice chair and a clerk, and I'm not sure if there's anything else, CSSU members. So all of that takes place first, so we do that from five-thirty to six-forty-five. And then the CSSU meeting will be at seven that, that evening. And then there's a board chair meeting for the new board chair on March eighteenth. And then executive session negotiations. I don't know that there's a need to have that. We did, and I think you guys were all there to discuss, to discuss the state of the, or the contract negotiations with teachers.
So our meeting starts on five-thirty on the twelfth.
Five-thirty in here, yes.
So, anything else? And if not, we will adjourn. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And audience.